Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I don't see how he can get to that even.
I'm just, yeah, I, I don't either, but, I mean, you could build something there. South of that building.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I look at it.
Okay.
I heard.
Uh, but, my question is, is, I want to be able to try to ask whoever if they've got anything or any tools that they have in regards to land.
Well, you know, what would probably would have been a good place is that other property we looked at that we were going to move the, or the corner.
That's true.
I don't know whether it's still for sale or not.
It's a lot of money. I'm looking for, see what we can do.
No, well, it's pretty.
What are you trying to build?
Hey, what the heck? I'm like, it's all worked out.
For the women's. Well, I think we ought to be talking to Luke again. Luke Henley offered up the building at, uh,
Sorry.
south and north. He's got one north for the government services.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he won't donate.
Yeah.
Right.
From big data.
We're still, I know. The nation brings from the past that will work with us, but every time I open up the her.
Oh, William.
Yeah.
During the hit light thing.
DJ Ice and Dito.
That one person we looked at, uh, the high school's long gone, isn't it?
You want to cross street, you, you built a house there, one of those little firemen built a house there.
Yeah, that was a good property.
Yeah, that would have been a good property for, for that.
This plant's been hurt enough.
No, it's just good, and I got chocolate.
I was thinking, figure. Get rid of my drainage floor stuff. Think I was such a jerk.
He was, uh, he was probably about as nasty of a builder as I've encountered.
I have, uh, but that's been the worst example of any.
Oh, my lord.
Construction site, I mean, that I've been associated with since I've been at off. I've never seen anything like it. I mean, normally when we go out and we tell them to do something, they usually do it.
Well, and when they come in here, they're normally pretty humble too, but he wasn't humble at all.
Well, I can't believe that he even started without having the whole thing taped.
Yeah.
And it said right on there, constr-, you know, erosion control. You gotta do it before you screw things up, or it doesn't control anything. That's why I don't even think we can fix.
It's unbelievable. That really was unbelievable. He was crazy.
He's ready to fight, wouldn't he?
He was. You tell me what I didn't come here to get.
Yeah.
Do your job. We won't yell at you. I want to table the joint session too. Did you read that? Was it, was it okay?
Good, yeah.
Because I just had him a chance to read it.
Ready?
Ready.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'll call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Please let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Harebrant present. Um, if you would all please stand, and Jim Neal, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the Executive Session Memorandum from March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, approval of meeting minutes, uh, from February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Can we table that? I didn't get a chance to review those.
Motion to table.
So move.
Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, then we also have, uh, the joint session with the county council on the twenty-third of February, and also the highway meeting that we had on the twenty-sixth.
Do we do those separately?
Oh, yeah, I can.
Is that one I always look at?
Uh, the first item up is the, uh, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one joint session with the county council.
Move to approve.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And then we have the highway meeting from the twenty-sixth of February, two thousand twenty-one.
Some of the.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Obstain.
One abstain. Uh, plot approval, Bellevue Estates.
Good afternoon. Uh, currently, they have all the signatures required, and we would recommend, uh, approval of the secondary minor plot for Bellevue Estates.
So.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Just that one, one top, or?
Just one on top, yes.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and we'll proceed with, uh, highway business. Jim?
All right, thank you. Um, today for you, I have no road tests or private traffic control permits. Uh, likewise, I have no bonds for acceptance, the bonds are whether it's a credit for acceptance or release. Which brings me to agreements, uh, or supplements. And you have supplemental agreement number one between Hamilton County and Clark Deets. Uh, this is for some additional services for Bridge one sixty. Uh, we changed the scope of, uh, the maintenance work we're doing on Bridge one sixty, one hundred and sixteenth Street over the White River, uh, necessitating a, um, an increase of, it appears to be fifty-nine hundred dollars. We'd recommend the board approve of forty-nine hundred.
So.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Uh, I have no accepted streets today, which brings me to concurrent of traffic study correspondence. Uh, today I have a, a list of correspondents dated March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, contains four responses. We recommend the board approve these four responses.
So.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Um, the next item on the agenda is road closures. Uh, the first item I have there is for the closure of two hundred and thirty-sixth Street from Dimming Road to Devaney Road. Uh, this will occur, uh, on or after Monday, April fifth, for a period not to exceed one hundred and twenty calendar days. We recommend the board approve this closure.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
This time I, uh, request that you, uh, amend the agenda to add another road closure for, uh, Little Eagle Creek Avenue from one hundred and forty-sixth Street to one hundred and fifty-sixth Street.
So move.
For what?
To amend the agenda.
Yes, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, this is for a closure beginning on or after Monday, March twenty-second, for a period not to exceed ninety calendar days. We recommend the board approve this closure.
What are you doing?
Uh, that's to build the north leg for the roundabout for the one hundred and forty-sixth Street, the last portion. So this is the roundabout that's at Little Creek, Little Creek Avenue and one hundred and forty-sixth Street, uh, just immediately, uh, east of the bridge over Little Eagle Creek.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Um, the last item I have for you today is, uh, I begin to ask you, uh, to amend the agenda to, uh, add a permission to advertise, uh, for contract resurfaced project twenty dash oh-four of various roads in Jackson Township.
Move to amend the agenda to include that item.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, this is, sorry. Uh, this is a permission to advertise for this contract. Uh, we will be opening the bids on to two, Wednesday, uh, April sixth. Um, and we'll be, uh, trying to award the same day. Now, this is a Wednesday. Um, we got into a time crunch with this because this is, uh, Community Crossings money, and we have to have it let within the four-month window. Um, so we will open these bids at the highway department, and then I don't know, we'll have to, uh, probably try to give, uh, two of you that day or the next day in order to get signatures because they're due on the eighth.
Probably be safer to do team's meeting because it probably has to be done in open, the acceptance.
We'll, we'll need signatures on the, as well. Yeah, for, for the acceptance, so you'd have to that, I believe, so.
Well, we, the auditor's office figured that one out with the team's meetings for the signatures. Does it have to be original?
Unless they need it original, well. It's just a Form ninety-six, so. It's, we can be e-sign documents.
Yeah.
They just need to have an open meeting to award it.
That's April sixth.
Yes.
You have to get me in Michigan.
Yeah, thanks for forwarding that reminder.
Okay, that was this?
That was this, yes.
You do not have to open the bids at a meeting as long as they're open publicly, so you could schedule a meeting an hour, hour and a half later, and they could make recommendations, and you wouldn't have to be tied up on the call all that time.
Yeah.
No, and that's fine. It's just, we have to figure that out. So if you'd schedule it and get it advertised, I just don't want to have a technical glitch under open door.
Yeah, our, our bid opening's at one PM, so, um. Bids coming to the auditor or the highway department? Coming to the highway department.
So if someone was scheduled team's meeting, I should be able to attend. Are you doing anything the first week I even?
I should be able.
I hope you'd be in town.
I know, you keep talking and I won't be. You're about to talk me out of town again.
So, do you need a motion?
Uh, do we already have the motion for this, or?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I'd move to establish a commissioners' meeting to consider the bids, um, on or around April sixth, so the team meeting.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Uh, I have no official, uh, actions or correspondence or other announcements. Fred does have, uh, nine boards up. Let's do a quick digest for you. Uh, one of them is our, uh, twenty-twenty annual highway report that's done every year for the State Board of Accounts. Uh, it's not due till, it's actually June, but Jamie and, and Dawn have worked together to get this done early, so we'd like to go ahead and get it approved and submitted. You probably need to use the Sharpie on that because the yellow doesn't work well with the ballpoint pen, but, uh, everything seems to be in order, and we recommend your approval.
So move.
Of the twenty-twenty highway report.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And one other very quick item. Um, this is just a request your permission for us to proceed on with, uh, procurement of salt for next winter for ourselves and, uh, all the participating municipalities that go in with us.
So move.
Like to move forward and start working on the bid package for that.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Mr. Booker.
I'm not here today for, uh, emergency proclamation, so that's good news.
Yeah.
I do want to thank the auditor's office, especially Kim, for all of her hard work. Not only did she have to do all the document e-signs for all of those, but she also took them to the clerk's office to get them file stamped, so just want to thank Kim for all of her hard work. But before you today is the Enterprise Fleet lease agreement. This is part of a Department of Justice, uh, grant that we work, are, are working with, with the Sheriff's Department. It was reviewed by, uh, Mr. Connor Esquire, and, uh.
Are, are these the ones that Ryan and I were talking about last week?
No, those aren't the ones that you've had to review fourteen weeks.
Yeah, I'm gonna face her.
Yeah, no, this is just the fleet.
Sorry about that, sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd add to add a thanks to Kim also for working on holidays to get those proclamations through. She's rolling her eyes at me, but we did appreciate it.
All right. Uh, next up, uh, we've got big cometry, um, international agreement. Chris Martins. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, this is an agreement for orthophotography for this year. Uh, we kind of got behind the timetable here a little bit because we were waiting for pricing from the state. That didn't come through until late January.
Chris, could you take off your mask? You're, you're really mumbling.
Fumbling, okay. Um, basically, this is for orthophotography for this year, uh, for the imagery. Um, we were looking at going with the state contract, but the pricing on this is actually less than half of the state pricing when we buy up to three inch. I discussed it with Christine a little bit last week. Uh, we just request approval to move forward with this.
As a reminder, the cities and towns participate in the cost.
Yeah, they'll cost share with us.
And I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public Safety Communications, Jeff Schimmer. That's three items.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Bring in front of you three items for your consideration. The first one is a memorandum of understanding with Madison County. This is allowing them access to a few of our EMA frequencies on our radio system. Since EMA works alongside with Madison County quite a bit, we did find some areas where we can improve that communication when they're working together. This is our standard, uh, MOU that we usually issue out for this.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
The second one is relay agreement. This is software for law enforcement. Uh, some of the agencies found it particularly, uh, helpful during the pandemic, and this is a software that goes in the car and it allows the public to report through computer, through an app, non-emergency calls, and it allows that officer to be able to interact with those individuals and do that case without having to face-to-face, uh, communications where it has potential for potentially, uh, spreading, uh, germs and such. Uh, it is a three-year contract at twenty-seven thousand five hundred a year.
Um, one item on this contract, it has an automatic renewal.
Yes.
Which I personally think is a bad idea, especially in government. So, I would move to, and, uh, did you review the, the limitation of liability and no warranties? I'm not sure what this company's going to do.
Okay, that's fine. I can get with Connor on it. We did the initial read over of it, so we can make those changes.
Well, check with the, the entity and make sure that one weeks, but the elimination of warranties and the indemnification makes me extremely nervous as to, if we have a problem, what's our recourse?
Jeff, I guess I don't understand the, the purpose of this. Explain, explain, wha- what are we getting for twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Well, what this app, uh, does, it was, uh, submitted by the police departments, and it was a way for the public to, uh, have a engagement with the police officers to where, rather than the call necessarily come through dispatch through a phone, they would be able to pick up the app and do a, or request a report for a small item. It could be, let's say, small vandalism or something as such. It comes into dispatch, it gets routed to the officer, and at that point, it's hands off for dispatch. The officer actually takes over the call at that point, does what's needed, communicates directly with that individual, and then closes out the case.
But wouldn't that situation, if they called in and was dispatched out there, there wouldn't be any other thing with dispatch other than saying, I've arrived and I'm leaving, would there?
There might be some additional stuff along the way, but it also allows the, the officer to respond according to, uh, his priorities of what's going on that particular day.
Dennis, what's your opinion of this?
Um, it is not something that the sheriff's office or the smaller agencies are interested in using, but it is something that Carmel, Fishers is using it now, Carmel and Westfield, I believe Noble's.
That's correct.
Yeah, it was the larger jurisdictions. We talked about it at the nine-one-one executive board level.
Correct.
And it was supported by public safety, and it moved its way up, and no one had an objection to it. Um, like, because they felt it was going to save the, the guys on the street time because they're not interrupted in what they're doing with nine-one-one dispatch. It just routes through, they handle it. The only thing is, does the app clearly do a disclaimer that says you're not in our permanent records?
That's a good question. I'm not sure on the app itself.
I mean, is there an expectation of the, of the public that there's some public record being created? Because I don't know if there is.
There would be through the CAD system because it's part of our tracking of officers on their activities and such.
Okay.
And the other part, you know, normally if we dispatch an individual, let's say an officer to, uh, to a house or something, they would go to the house, actually talk to the individual. In this case, we can maintain social distance and.
Okay. No, it was, it was supported by.
Well, I mean, if it's supported by the larger jurisdiction, I, to me, it doesn't seem worth it. I mean, I just, I can't imagine people using it very much to begin with.
That's one of the reasons that we are, one of the reasons that we're not, is just that so few calls actually go through it, and it requires the officer to have a whole separate program up and running, and so that's kind of our concern.
Yeah, and you're talking, not, almost ninety thousand dollars over three years.
But again, if our proportionate share of that, ninety thousand.
Well, I know, but.
Is very, is minimal, and if it's something the other jurisdictions want, I don't want to get in the questioning.
And they definitely do. So, I mean, Carmel, Fishers, and Westfield, and, and Nobleville, I believe.
Nobleville.
And my concern, we're contractual in terms of, there are no warranties in this thing, and there's, there's indemnities in this thing, and there's an automatic renewal, which I find abhorrent.
So, are you going to make a motion to table this, then?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and then Connor, you'll get back with us, uh, after legal review.
Find out what the company's willing to do.
Yeah, and I'd like to have a reaffirmation from these places that you say want it so bad. I'd, I'd like to have some kind of.
Well, that's what the.
Statistical information from them or something, saying, oh, yeah, we, we've used this two hundred and fifty times this year or something, or would.
Well, and we could definitely do that. Uh, I could send out an email to the agencies that are currently using it, that were kind of using it like a, a beta, to get some numbers from them, and then off at the next public safety meeting, address it with all the chiefs and see if we can get those numbers.
Okay, and then Connor, you can get the information to us for our next meeting. Okay, you're next.
I don't, I don't want to oppose it or, or fight it. I, it just doesn't seem very meaningful to me.
Next up is the Ritter Strategic Managed Services Agreement.
Yes, the Ritter Strategic Managed Services Agreement is, uh, hiring a consultant to look at some, uh, operations within dispatch and to examine some alternatives to it and the, uh, possibility of reducing some of our costs that we currently spend. Uh, the example would be, uh, say we're looking at a phone system, and, uh, they would be able to research that and help us come up with what would work best for our center and possibly, and hopefully reduce those costs as well. Um, the gentleman that has this is a former, uh, director of the statewide nine-one-one board. He's very well-versed in, uh, nine-one-one in Indiana. He's one of the individuals that made the state what it is, part of nine-one-one goes.
Okay, just clarification on this, and that's why I thought this was part of the relay, because it chose as Exhibit A. It, that's how this thing started, and then at the back of it, it's got attached to it relay order form.
Oh, that may have been attached by wrong.
Okay, that explains it, because I thought it was embedded in the relay, and that didn't make any sense.
Also, I was a little confused because the Ritter one is different than when we were talking.
Okay.
My bad, I'm sorry for that fusion.
But the thing is, you might, it does say Exhibit A.
We'll have them change it.
Well, we'll just mark through it. I don't care. It's just, I was going, what the heck?
Oh, I might add, that is a per-hour cost, so we're not paying a yearly. It's based literally on how much we use them. So if we're, let's say, go for software appropriation, we could also hire them to do an RF.
I'd move to approve the Ritter contract, now that I understand.
Yeah, sorry, I was confused earlier.
Sorry about that.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you, and I'll get those numbers for you.
Great.
Community Development Block Grant, Chris Allen. It's like Amy's taking Chris's place. All right.
Amy Jacobson, Noblesville Housing Authority. Um, first up, I have the First Amendment to the CDB-GCV agreement with Fall Creek Township Trustee's Office. Um, the original agreement, uh, had an error on it. It was six thousand dollars, um, short, um, on the funding agreement, so, and was listed as twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars instead of twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, and that's the only change, um, for this agreement.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next is the, um, Britton Ridge ADA Sidewalk Project. Um, I'm sorry. Next is, yes, the Britton Ridge ADA Sidewalk Project Section one-oh-six review. Um, that, this is the one-oh-six review for a project that is in Fishers. Um, they're reconstructing approximately forty-four sidewalk curb ramps, as well as installation of detectable warning plates to meet ADA compliance standards. Um, this is located south off of one-thirty-first Street and east off of Cumberland Road. Once the one-oh-six review has been approved, then the environmental review, uh, will come back to the commissioners for their approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Next is the Noblesville Monument Street ADA Sidewalk Project Section one-oh-six review. Um, this is a project that, uh, will remove approximately twenty-six hundred linear feet of deteriorated five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk on the north side of Monument Street from Cumberland Road to North Sixteenth Street, and replace it with a six-foot-wide concrete sidewalk with ID, ADA compliant ramps. And, uh, like the other project, once the one-oh-six review has been approved, um, it will be submitted to the state, and then after, uh, it's reviewed by the state, it will come back to the commissioners for their, the environmental review will come back to the commissioners for their approval.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay, next is the Park Broadway Drainage Project Environmental Review. Um, the environmental review for Claire Knotts has already been completed. Um, the review, uh, found that the project does not require any mitigation for compliance with any federal environmental statutes or regulations. Um, just needs the commissioners' approval.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And then next, I have the, uh, Sandstone and Spyglass ADA Sidewalk Project Funding Agreement. Um, this is also in Fishers. Um, uh, Fishers was awarded a three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-one cents, uh, agreement to install curbs ramps and install ADA detectable warning plates. They have, uh, completed those projects and still have one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars and forty-nine cents remaining, and so they are adding, uh, the neighborhood nor, Northfield Estates to the project. So it's exactly the same as the other, just, uh, adding on the other neighborhood.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And then lastly, I have the Ninety-Sixth and College, uh, Avenue Drainage Project Funding Agreement Amendment. Um, and this, uh, also went before the Drainage Board earlier. Uh, this amended amendment revises the language of the original agreement, adding the Park Broadway Drainage Project, adding CDBG funding, uh, for the project, and also , uh, changes the, the dates to, um, go back to October first for completion and October thirty-first, uh, to have all the claims submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And then, um. And then lastly, just one, wanted to give you an update. The CDBG Program Year twenty twenty one funding, we were notified on February twenty sixth, the amount is one million ninety two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. And my office is beginning to work on the Program Year twenty twenty one action plan with the timing similar to how it's been in years before. We plan to have the applications available, full applications available at the end of this month. The Program Year twenty twenty one will begin on October first, twenty twenty one.
One thing on that before you send out invitations or anything else, I think we need to hone in on what are expectations and who we want to contract with. I've not been happy with the way it's run before where you reach out to all these entities and come back with recommendations. I think it's upon us to figure out how we want to invest those dollars and to target that.
Absolutely.
Before we get everybody all excited about it. I don't know what, how you feel, but.
It's fine.
That's fine with me. Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Committee reports, Steve.
Have none.
Christine.
I did meet with Riverview, the Health Department and EMA this morning, talking about transitioning and planning with the vaccination clinics. Riverview's scheduled to wind down basically mid-April and they're ready to wash their hands of it. It's been a huge strain on them. The Health Department has been placed in an unfortunate position. I think we planned so well and our clinic is going so, so well. That the state has asked the Health Department to take on Pfizer and ramp up to over three thousand vaccines a day. And unfortunately, they started that process early. So now the Health Department's trying to administer Pfizer and Moderna at the same time. Which gets you into a really difficult situation with second doses and that type of thing.
Are we not doing Johnson and Johnson at all?
No.
Not yet.
And the, and we're not going to be doing Moderna after they phase out of the second shots. Will be a Pfizer only clinic because the difference between the two vaccines, they're both two shots. But you actually have to reconstitute, there's a lot more steps and a longer period of time to prep for the clinic using Pfizer. It's just more complicated. The state's supplying refrigeration, they've changed the protocol on it where it's not the ultra cold storage, which is good.
I know several people that's had an immense amount of problems with the second shot.
Well, yeah, it seemed to be worse with Pfizer versus Moderna, but it goes, well, a lot, a lot of people don't even know.
A lot of people have had Moderna. I had Moderna, didn't bother me a bit.
Yeah. And some, with Pfizer, same thing. No, no adverse reactions. So.
I think it's just.
Moderna is the one that I've heard the most though.
Nope, but Pfizer.
Pfizer. There's been a lot, Moderna's been in the market a lot longer too. And boy, I was out there last week and they've done a great job. They've, they got the Moderna side and then they got the Pfizer side and they're all set up so they can transition and they've, it's phenomenal.
They've done a really.
Why are they not open on weekends?
They.
They volunteer.
I mean, that was asked.
They go to three thousand a week. They're gonna.
Well, the thing is that they made a determination, whether we agree with it or not, it's the Health Department running it, that there are options available elsewhere for weekends. Cause now it's available through pharmacies, et cetera. Now, we, I suppose we could work with them and try to set up a weekend. But what I encouraged Jason to do is to, since this is in theory reimbursable. We ought to be looking to hire a contract person to be an incident commander or at least a pod operator. Because right now he's trying to do all of that himself. And the Health Department really needs to get back to doing the Health Department stuff. And to the extent we can hire RNs to do reconstituting of vaccines. And to the extent we can hire other people to oversee those operations and get reimbursed, I really think that's what they need to consider. And we talked just that strongly to him. I mean, it was just, the Health Department.
The person was just asking me a couple of times over the weekend, why, why we weren't open on the weekend. Everybody else was.
No, it missed. That's been a concern, but right now they don't feel they can handle that.
Anything else?
No.
I just wanted to recognize the Highway Department that we were successful in our third application with D N R. For the first phase of the Steven Nation Community Pathways, where that is a trail that will be from Catherine Street. And Cicero all the way to Keteui Park, which was a major, gonna be a major project for us. To be able to get that to the park as the first phase. It was over a million dollars that we were able to get from, from D N R. Highway Department worked really hard, along with Butler Fairman and Cypher to, to get this grant. And so anyway, congratulations to everybody.
What, what year is that?
That's here or next, it's the next year, twenty three. It's quick.
Goal is to get it done in eighteen months.
Yeah, it's quick.
Wow. Is it designed, you've got all the design in place?
No, we just got some preliminary done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you've got a lot of.
But it's not total funded, so it's state funded and we have no right of way that we have to buy, so hopefully it will go quick.
Good. That is exciting.
Pretty awesome.
Thank you, Mark, for all that work on it. I'm glad you've been cheering.
Oh, no. I was gonna say, it was our third application. We tried and tried and tried to get it. So glad to get it. Next up, our attorney.
Just a couple of items. The first item is Resolution Number zero three dash zero eight dash twenty one dash one. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving issuance of local income tax revenue refunding bonds of the county. Again, this is the almost thirty million dollar refunding of the ninety six four twenty one TIF, Village Park TIF. And the solar project. About two weeks ago, interest rates got a little bad. They were going up and they've evened up. Were scheduled to be in the market on Wednesday to place these bonds, anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of four and a half million dollars of savings. Again, that savings is probably not going to be all money in the pocket because most of the savings is Village Park, ninety six four twenty one. And those are retail areas with assessed value going down. In fact, we don't want to cloud our, our party here. But received this morning that the owner of Clay Terrace has filed for bankruptcy protection. So that project that we went back and forth, Mr. Harden, on is at a very minimum on hold. The good news is, talk to the auditor and between what we've got sitting in reserve funds plus cash. We should, we've got enough to get through at least two years of the remaining time on that bond. So doesn't have anything to do with our refunding, but going to Westfield this evening to get an ordinance and an interlocal agreement approved. And we'll be ready to go and realize the savings. We're hoping to be right at one percent. So with that, the resolution is before you.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have a, on the solar project, we're reducing down the bond rate, but they've still guaranteed the savings that here.
Yeah, that's still there.
So that actually increases our spread on savings.
That's still there.
Right. We are, and we are, we didn't, that, that obligation goes out, I think, three years longer than the TIF bonds. We left it right in place because we didn't want to have to get into a, a whole situation of renegotiating going forward with the savings. The bond that backs up the savings. So we've kept, as far as the contractor's concerned, that hasn't changed. As far as the auditor's concerned, it's a smaller check.
Okay.
What did Landon do?
Well, Landon has done a great job. In fact, Landon has put a project before me, the airport bonds. When we bought up the Montgomerys out of the airport, those bonds, their interest is taxable, but there's some savings there. It's not huge. But I, we gotta get through this one before.
Yeah. You want to mention anything about a triple A?
Oh, yeah, by the way.
That's pretty, that's pretty exciting.
The finance team, the auditor's office. Baird, Baker Tilly, we all participated in the rating call that you do with the various rating agencies. And it's standard in this industry. And we explained not only the income tax situation. But all the things we've done to put together the TIF program, basically the sales pits that we use for our county, getting the lit pledge behind us. And Thursday, we received information that we received triple A rating. That there, there is no other county in the state of Indiana that has a triple A bond rating. So congratulations to you, the council, auditor's office, everybody that makes this, this place a good place to work.
That's awesome news. Awesome news.
I'm sure you must have scared them.
Yeah, you must have.
The last item I.
Did we vote on that?
No.
We have voted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I wasn't gonna give it to you, but we did. Cause you don't sign it anyway.
Well, you already signed it before we did.
And that's the reason I held on to it.
We also have interlocal agreement between the county and Westfield concerning the issuance of these bonds. In the statute, before everybody's time, other than Steve and I, when we created this district in nineteen eighty nine. It was outside the municipal boundaries of Westfield. It was at the request of Westfield because they saw this as future economic activity. Since then, they have annexed the area. And in order to issue bonds, even though they're refunding bonds and there's a savings. They have, Westfield has to consent to the refunding. They, in twenty ten, in the interlocal agreement, they agreed to consent to the refunding if there was savings. But they haven't effectively done that yet. This interlocal agreement, first of all, authorizes the refunding. Secondly, in the earlier agreements with Village Park area, there was a percentage of the assessed value that passed through to Westfield. This allows a twenty five percent pass through to Westfield. It also allows, if it looks like there might be a shortfall, the auditor consultation to.
Keep going to the.
Reduce the pass through, increase the collections to make sure we cover our debt. And I've read every word and recommend its approval.
No move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I, I have one thing.
Oh.
Uh, this is for a contract between the Health Department and the county and Seals Ambulance Services. Seals will be providing an ambulance at the four H site, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four thirty. And they'll have at least one ambulance. If we need more, we can request it and we can change our schedule as long as we let them know. And this will last until the vaccination is complete at the four H fair, fair ground. So I would recommend that we approve this.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Director of Administration.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
In your packet, we have nine items on the list. There's a lot of paper there, but I think it's a fairly simple discussion. First item, submitting for review and approval, two documents from Enterprise. These documents permit Enterprise to dispose of our decommissioned vehicles. And they've agreed to, or they've, at our request, agreed that they will credit the Enterprise account with the proceeds. From those sales. So I think it just requires one signature, but I would submit these for review and approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item on the list is an agreement between Vectren and Riverview Hospital and the county. Specifically for the roundabout to be installed in front of the hospital at thirty two thirty eight Junction. And this agreement has been reviewed by Scott Tripp, the building's superintendent at Riverview. And he agrees with everything described in the document. And I would submit that to the board for review and approval.
No move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
This, I believe, does require all three. Right there by the green tab. At a monitor, there's a verification document, notarization for you to sign as well. Next item on the list, submitting for review and approval, an agreement with Riverview Hospital for the use of their lot address two oh five. Westfield Boulevard or Westfield Road for the use for parking, for staff during the construction of the parking garage.
No move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item is just submitting to the board, first invoice from Garmin Construction on the parking garage project. The amount of the invoice is two hundred ninety two thousand, five dollars and eighty five cents.
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I think it's important to commend council, county council, for their agreement to fund the additional floor in this parking garage. But for their agreement during the construction process, quite honestly, I don't think the fifth floor would ever be constructed. Due to the parking constraints and the disruption to downtown and our employees.
I agree.
Truly appreciate them considering the request and, and funding it.
Next item on your list is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on your list is a notification to the commissioner that would want to attend this. The twenty twenty one Business Summit sponsored by Main Street is scheduled for August twentieth. I think you have some, attended that. I think Mr. Herebrand attended it last year. The location has yet to be identified, but August twentieth at nine, eight, I'm sorry, eight o'clock in the morning. It'll be somewhere in downtown Noblesville. If you want to check your calendar. August twentieth?
Yes, sir.
No, I won't go. We have an airport authority meeting.
You said August twentieth?
Yes.
Eight AM?
Yes.
I can do it if you can't. Just let's get closer to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we get closer, I'll have a location by then and.
I'll put a place marker.
Okay. Next item, submitting for review and approval, a request from John Pfeifer, Atlanta Town Board Member. Seeking approval from the commissioners for donation of two laptop units from the ISS Department. This request has been reviewed by Mike Carter, who confirms that the department does have in stock several decommissioned laptops. That would meet the service need for Atlanta. Mike estimates the value of these units to be less than five hundred dollars per unit.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item, Scott West, Director of Business Development for Ton. Next item, Scott West, Director of Business Development for Ton and Blank Construction, interesting name, invites the Board of Commissioners to tour the new Methodist Sports Franciscan Health Hospital, is currently under construction on North Illinois Street, between North Illinois and Highway 31, on 111, just south of 111th Street. He's advising March 24th, mid-morning, if that works for the commissioners, advises the tour would take no more than 60 minutes. The building's not completely finished yet, but he would like, likes to.
So he's thinking mid-morning?
Yes.
March 24th?
Yes.
I'm not available.
March 24th.
I probably can do it.
You tell me what time you'd like to be there and I will forward that on. Kent. Kent.
Oh. Probably about 9:30.
9:30, okay. I will send you a calendar invite once that's confirmed with them. Next item on the list, request the board to set April 12th as the date for imposing garnishment procedures on any county employee who appears on the delinquent property tax list. They do.
Actually.
There's only one individual, actually, that's on the list.
Oh, okay. And it's not us.
And it's not us. Not any of you three.
That's good. Actually, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
You need to.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Last item is just information, I'm sure you've already heard, but Chris Sorensen at Janus is retiring. And the new director, effective March 29th, is Yolanda Kincaid. May invite her to a future commissioners' meeting if you'd like.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have one other issue that got stuck in the bottom of my file. This is a two-page promissory note and mortgage for home repairs for the CD BG grant. We had to put it in a small font, but we got it in two pages. The important provisions of this, these loans are under $15,000. Hand is actually administering those. The repayment provisions follow federal law in number seven. If they change ownership, number two of it ceases to be the primary residence. Number three, if there's any lien foreclosure action on the property. And D, if there's a refinance without our consent, under those terms, there would be repayment. In paragraph nine, on the second page, shows the automatic 20% reduction during the five years of the loan. In months, the first year, if the repayment event occurred, it would be 100% between 12 and 24 months, it would be a 80% and so forth. And if, in fact, after 60 months, there's been no event of repayment, the total loan would be forgiven. This has been presented to the Housing Authority. They thank you for making it simple so they can explain it to people. This is about as simple as you can do a Monote and mortgage, and it would also be cross-referenced to the deed of record and recorded so as to perfect the lien. And I'd like your authority to use this form.
So, second.
And it's a five-year repay?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in page.
Seems like a one, it used to have 10.
Well, this is, this is 15,000.
Is there a logo?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Danielle, would you like to provide us an update?
Amy and Han will thank you also.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Danielle Carey-Tolan here to give you an update on the Hamilton County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I do have flyers if you guys want them, but we have sent out our flyer to all of our partners and community members. On the flyer, it has 22 partners listed on the back, showing people how they can get additional assistance if they need assistance in person through application process. We do have a total of 68 partners, though, throughout the whole county. That is from that list of 300 partners that we sent out. So they, they're helping in a variety of different ways, but only 22 of them are actually helping with clients. Many of you probably have already seen the video that was sponsored by Duke on the program that just launched this afternoon, so that is out and about and on social media.
Good job.
Go and like that, please. We've been doing call center training all day today, and then case manager training starts on Friday. I presented to the Arcadia Town Board and to all the township board members. I also wanted to give an update that one of the new treasury guidelines is that domestic violence clients that need to be fully masked need to have a way to get funding. So we have put, obviously, Prevail as the go-to for that, but something that we're gonna have to look to in the future is how to get funding for them.
Say that again, I'm not sure I followed this.
So the domestic violence clients that need to be fully masked, that need to have their identity off-grid.
Oh, oh, masked.
Totally redacted, yeah.
We've been wearing a lot of masks.
I know. Totally redacted. They don't have a way to apply for this grant.
Okay.
So we're working with Prevail directly for them to apply as kind of a COVID person.
Uh-huh.
Not COVID, yeah. So there's.
A surrogate.
Yes. So we're gonna have to find a way to get them funding for that purpose.
What about, have you talked to alternatives also because that's where you're gonna see people?
Right. Yeah, so right now, we're just directing them, though, through.
Okay. They just all go to Prevail?
Right now. Yep. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Well, the county does a lot of funding for Prevail.
Right. Yep. We're just gonna have to look at that, and I'll work with Todd a little bit on that. And we're just gonna have to think of other ways to help those clients that need to be that way. Also, I just wanted to give you a quick update. Our software company, this afternoon, the manager had called us and told us that the level of information that we're providing is much better than any other municipality that is out there, and we're catching things that other municipalities and jurisdictions across the US aren't catching. So that's kudos to our team in making sure that we're doing the right thing and making sure that we're hitting all the guidelines.
Very good. Where are you with Section 8 people? I mean, in terms of the cross? Because you've got almost everything covered.
But Section 8.
With a computer match program, correct?
Yep. We're waiting on Luke Britt right now to give us the form that we need to submit to Amy.
The MRU?
Yeah.
So did we get that? Because Luke, the correspondence indicated that they thought that they had it.
Yes, but I think Amy is still saying that CAGI is saying that we can't release those Section 8, the 230. So we're just gonna confirm with Luke Britt, public access. So we're just waiting on confirmation from him.
Okay, but I thought that there was something out there from that last email that he thought maybe went to the county.
No, that was a privacy. I was on a webinar with.
That was a privacy.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're.
A statement.
Their lawyer.
Todd, you need to.
Yeah.
I'll let you. Come on.
Between the mask and proximity.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So IDHC, I was on a webinar with them last week. They had their legal counsel with them. They're in the process of finalizing the agreement that will allow people to exchange information. They haven't got it out yet. They were probably their hope this week.
Okay, but that would override the issues of the release of information, correct?
Override whom?
Well, it's been floating around.
Not, not, not the federal government, no. That's, that's our, that's our big stick. I mean, that's, the whole issue with the Section 8 stuff is coming from Treasury and HUD. Certain things that we can disseminate amongst us.
Right.
And there are certain things we can't. And even the state's legal counsel yesterday, or Friday, said that, you know, with the Section 8 stuff, with the Section 8 information, that we cannot really say. So now, if they have, it, it all depends on what they're asking for. Again, it's, it's government, right? So certain things we can, certain things we can't.
Well, can we ask for enough to be in compliance with this funding?
It's what we're hoping for. We haven't got that far yet.
Okay, but that, that will come from Luke Britt or who gives the blessing? I just want it all figured out.
HUD's gonna have to give the blessing for us to do anything with it.
Yeah. So not Luke Britt?
Not.
So who's our HUD contact? Who the hell do we ask? I mean, it's just floating back and forth. I just, do we have a plan on some physical person we can ask or some department to ask?
Yeah, so we're working with the HUD District Official for Indiana. She was the one that sent us the guidance, saying, you, you can't do this. So what we'll do when we get, whatever we get from the state, we'll send it back to her, and we'll say, okay, here's what we have, here's the privacy that we have, can we do it this way?
Okay.
I can almost guarantee you, though, Madam Commissioner, they're gonna say no.
Well, and that's fine, but how many Section 8 people are we gonna have to check in this county?
Two hundred and some.
I think there's like 240, yeah.
So, big deal, we do it manually.
That's not, that's not that many.
Because that's the last cross-check, right, Danielle?
Yep.
That your program isn't able to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure Luke Britt has anything in this deal.
Yeah, quite frankly, I don't know who Luke Britt is.
Luke Britt's the public access counselor, but that's all state. We're in the federal domain now, and what we release is what's protected by federal law, but we might need to make sure there's not somebody double or triple dipping. So Luke Britt does not have a dog on his side. He's busy enough, and I'd take him off your, off your list.
Well, we were contacting him because originally we weren't gonna, we couldn't get anything.
Okay.
And we needed to confirm with him that we could get access.
Okay, and the prohibition on Section 8 is just for additional rental assistance?
Those would be for utilities.
But Section 8 people could get utility help, correct?
Correct.
Because it's not currently federally su, they just, the feds don't want anybody supplanting something or getting the same benefit twice, correct? Is that the reason?
Correct.
So they can't get rental assistance. Section 8 cannot get rental, but they can get utility.
Correct. Okay. Well, luckily, it's not a huge damage.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Anything else?
Other than that?
There were things going smoothly, right?
Yep, going smooth. Launching March 15th, 9:00 AM.
Yes.
All righty, thank you.
Yep.
Sheriff.
Yeah, I have a request in front of you today to retain a jail transport van that has been replaced through our enterprise agreement. We'd like to hang on to this vehicle, to dedicate it to use for our specialty teams, specifically our K-9 and ERG groups. It would help out with callouts, keeping all the equipment in one location, storing our incendiary devices according to ATF guidelines.
To move.
Second. You're just gonna retrofit the thing to hit this specific purpose?
That is correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else? Great. Madam Auditor.
First thing I have is a Civic Rec quote for the Hamilton County Purdue Extension that is, works in conjunction with our ordinance 12521A for your approval.
What is Civic?
So this is our Civic Plus.
Oh, okay.
For the.
Civic Rec.
Or Civic Rec, they're, they're all run together, for the state sales tax.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Next item.
Next, I have the Hamilton County Express 2021 Bus Purchase Agreement for your approval.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mark, this, just for your signature as well. Next, I have payroll for your approval.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have claims for your approval.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And lastly, I just need direction from the Board of Commissioners and Mike Howard regarding the March 15th launch of the rental assistance. I think Todd and Danielle have been working together, but we have a conflict, the conflict approval that was sent, we have not heard back from them yet regarding on when we can let money go. Then I have Todd alluded to the call that he was on Friday regarding the plan document. Todd, is that what that was called?
Uh-huh, I'm sorry.
The plan document that needs to be in place from Westfield before they can let money go. And I know you and Danielle had talked about that, the policy.
Policy man, yeah, the policy.
And then, lastly, was if you were moving forward with any alliance with Noblesville Housing Authority that Mark you had requested. I know we got Christine information, so just need some clarification on those three issues.
I'm not sure what the clarification you want.
Well, are you moving forward, so with the Noblesville Housing Alliance, are you moving forward with that? Yes or no?
I don't think so right now.
Okay.
I don't know that I have the consent.
And then the, the document that needs to be in place before we can let any checks go, the policy.
Policy manual?
Yes. And I don't know if Danielle wants to speak to that, or if it's done, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, why don't you?
But that's something that, unless you have that on file, checks will not be released.
We, I mean, our first check won't really probably go out for a week and a half after applications open. We're really waiting for Uncork to provide their part of it, but they can't provide their part until they release their software program to us, which is this Friday. So we're just kind of waiting on that part, but everything else is almost done. My, my grant administrator is actually reviewing it right now, and so is my intellectual property attorney.
So, just, just so you know, so until I have the policy.
No, that's fine.
Okay. And I just wanted to make.
And I think that Todd wanted to wait till it's complete, but if you get your review done, can you note the items that are missing and then give it to Todd so he can get going on it?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to dump 52 pages on them all that once they're in this good.
Yeah. Okay. So I have.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing else on the COVID clinic is I think Health Department is getting asked, and I, it's just human nature, when can they have their building back?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just because they want to do programming and that, I don't think that's an answer anybody knows at this point. Do you know anything on that, Dan?
When we approached them about using, so they, we said it will be at least until June. So Susan would hold that up front.
I, I truly, with now becoming basically a super site, for everybody's planning purposes, I think, quite honestly, we need to extend that date, where maybe we'll get lucky, but I hate to see them spend time, anything through the end of September, from what I am seeing.
Director Wood and I had planned to meet with Jason at the end of March, early, first week of April, to get an assessment from him on what he thinks the extension might need to be.
Well, he, I mean, we talked this morning about it, and I think the consensus was, was at least through September, if not the whole year. It just, this thing's not going away, and nobody knows whether the next round's gonna be having booster shots on top of everything else, if they can't combine the booster into a regular flu shot.
Okay, so we'll, we'll set a target to come to the commissioners. He's probably the first week in April, your first meeting in April.
Okay.
With a recommendation, and we'll make sure Susan is aware of what's gonna be recommended.
Yeah, well, why don't you let Susan know now that you're meeting? Because I think they are getting some pressure to get their stuff back, and I just don't Because I think they are getting some pressure to get their stuff back, and I just don't see that building being released realistically, and I don't think it's fair to sit on it much longer.
Well, there's two issues. One, you're talking about, some of them are talking about maybe these, after your second shot, you need, after three months, you need to be looking for a booster. And the other thing they're talking about is this new strain that's coming through may require altering the vaccine and re-vaccinating everybody. So I, I mean, this, yeah, I think ninety days is, is probably pretty unrealistic.
No, I think we're gonna be in this business for a long time. So I just wanted to bring that up so it was focused, because, you know, Health Department can't answer that. Emergency management, I mean, we're the only ones that can answer this, so.
Anything else to come before the board?
Move, Judge.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.